And let's have a, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Valentini.
Here.
Mr. McFarland.
Here.
Mr. Strazza.
Here.
Mr. Noonan.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Chairperson Harris.
Here.
We have a form.
Okay, is there any public comment?
There is not. We didn't, no one registered to speak on something that's not on the agenda. We did receive some comments related to the agenda, but I'll introduce those at that time.
Can we have a review of the minutes? Are there any comments or questions? I just heard one small thing. Allies is spelled allies instead of alleys. I don't see it right now, but I'll show you after the meeting. Any, any other comments about the minutes? If not, can we have a vote to approve the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Mr. Strazza, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McFarland, second.
Okay. Mr. Valentini? Sorry, yes or, yes or no on the minutes? Yes. Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes. I've got to get it.
Was Mr. Valentini a yes on that?
Yes, I was.
All right, thank you.
Is the first one? Is the first one SPO 221? Okay, okay, a motion, there is a request to approve. The subject property is, there, I don't, I don't see the, I'm sorry. A special use, I'm sorry, a special use permit for vehicle sales in the M1 restricted manufacturing district for the property located at 1321 North Mason Street.
Would you like the staff report?
Please.
So staff is recommending approval of this application. We find that it meets the zoning ordinances guidelines for special use with the condition that the parking lot is screened from view of the street. The subject property is located in a fairly mixed use neighborhood. You can see the block that's located on is industrially zoned, but to the east and west is single family housing. Across the street, I believe, is the Bloomington Water District. It's on Division Street, so it's sort of toward the northernmost part of the municipal limits. In terms of immediately adjacent uses, this property here, 604 West Division, was granted a special use permit last year for vehicles repair. So the proposed use, generally, this would be by right in the M1 district, but because it involves a residential district, it doesn't require a special use permit. The, this does take place on lot two, that's the subject property. It would be used vehicle sales to be conducted either online or through auctions. So we don't anticipate much of an impact in terms of higher activity levels or traffic generated in this neighborhood. The applicant indicated that up to six cars would be kept on site at any one time. And here's 604 West Division, they recently put in a fence to screen there, the activity conducted there from, from view of the, of the street. And so we're proposing that that be extended to parking lot here. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the special use permit, if approved, would meet a few different goals of the comprehensive plan, one being to ensure sensitive transitions from residential to non-residential, focusing on retention and expansion of existing businesses and prioritizing in redevelopment in order to spur growth and reinvestment cities. Special use criteria, all of them to be met in order to grant a special use. Staff found that all of them are met due to the relatively small scale of the proposed use, as well as the fact that the municipal, municipal code doesn't allow vehicles for sale to be displayed in the roadway, so all vehicles would have to be kept on site. Essentially, no negative attacks are anticipated to neighboring properties. And the only, the only condition we suggest is that the parking lot be screened from view of the street, so that the residents to be west have some distance from it. And with that, we're recommending approval.
I had, I have one question. The extension of the fence, I'm not sure from the picture which way this goes. And...
I have a picture of the fence as it currently exists, but essentially, I believe that it follows this line here. And it stops at 604 West Division. Essentially, the, the condition would be more just to screen the parking lot from, from view of the street. It doesn't necessarily have to be an extension of the existing fence.
I apologize, we're just having some technical issues at City Hall, so bear with us for one second, please.
Can we have a testimony by the applicant now?
Mr. Legrand is in City Hall, and if you just want to walk up to, to the screen there, you can, you can provide your testimony.
Sir, they're ready for you. Oh, said somebody else was talking. Hello?
Hello, Mr. Legrand, could you state your name, address, and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So, love me God. Gene Legrand, 503 Maple Place, Normal, Illinois.
And could you describe what you would like to have approved?
I can't hear you.
Could you state your case, please?
Yes, I would like to have the zoning changed, so I could get a dealership there. I know in the last 10 years, there have been two different dealerships on that street, and they didn't have to have a special permit. So now I'm trying to get a special permit, so I can buy and sell a few cars in my old age.
Okay. Okay, is there any, are there any questions for Mr. Legrand?
Sir, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So on the proposal, the, the testimony was, or the presentation was, you're going to have no more than six vehicles on the lot. Is that what you agree to and understand?
Yes, more or less, about six, that's about all the room I got to park them there.
Okay, you won't be parking them out on the street or anything like that?
No.
And do you agree on the, the suggestion of extending the fence, fencing?
I can extend a little bit, but I can't go across the driveway.
That was my question, it looked like it would cross the driveway.
Can staff kind of explain their desire on where that should be?
I didn't have a specific location in mind.
I think, Mr. Valentini, I think the intention was to, to screen the, the traffic from the view of the street. So let me share my screen here. So the existing, the property to the north is, is putting a fence along Division Street. That was a condition of the special use permit approved for 604 West Division. Staff was just thinking of a continuation of that, if it's possible to, to keep, to reduce any potential impacts on the neighborhood and continue that down. Obviously, not going in front of the driveway, but, but where, where the parking is.
Yeah, that could be extended.
Right in this area, that's a little bit of a, a better visual on the site plan there.
That can be extended.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Legrand.
That it?
Yes, unless there are other questions or comments. Is there anybody speaking for, for or against this application?
There is one person on the call, Cheryl Doughty. You'll have to hit star six to unmute yourself.
Cheryl, will you state your name, your address, and that you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
My name is Cheryl Doughty, and I live at 1322 North Mason Street. And I do.
Okay.
I have some questions in regards to this, that's going to happen here. Like I said again before, this is right across the street from my home. My neighbors and I, we've had, we have issues, All About Auto. I want to state that they have done a tremendous job of getting these cars off the street. They are very respectful. We, we talk with them, we get along with them, they are really a great group of guys over there. I have a problem with Mr. Legrand moving over there and doing, I'd like to know who's selling cars. I mean, is it, is the business changing? Is it going to have a new name?
Mr. Legrand, can you answer that question?
I will be selling a few cars. What I would do would be going to the auctions and just picking up a car there, and if it needed some work, I could give it to All About Auto, and then I could resell it and take it back to the auction. That's basically what I'm looking for.
Okay, and as far as your six cars, your spots, I don't think there's enough room on that small lot over there for six cars. And All About Auto has their customers over there, cars in and out all day. So where are your customers going to park to come in there?
All About Auto is building another building on the back side, and that's where their office will be.
So then you're going to have an office where All About Auto is now, then, correct?
Yes, yes.
But you're only still going to have six cars, that's it?
Yeah, that's about all I can fit there.
Okay, I'm, I'm just curious, because like I said, this, this is our home, we're there 24/7, we live there. We don't get to work, you know, we don't get to go there eight hours and go home. This is our homes, we're trying to protect them. Majority of us right now are feeling that the neighborhood is being disrespected. I mean, All About Auto is there, like I said, they're awesome. Now you want to put a car lot dealership over there. The street is so small, and I'm all about small business, believe me, I am. My son has one, I'm all for it, but I believe in the correct areas. But going forwards here, the fence is going to be extended. That's going to be on the west side of All About Auto's lot. It's going to skip the drive and go on down further to the east, correct?
Mr. Legrand, who can...
Side, but it will go north and south.
No, that fence is already there, nor north and south, that's on Mason Street. The one I'm talking about is going to go, it's going to be an extension to that one, which is going to go to the east. So we'll skip the driveway, but you're going to extend it down further, so the residents on Mason Street cannot see that lot, correct?
But Ms. Ms. Doughty, I'm sorry to jump in here, I just wanted to, to clarify process. If you want to direct your questions to the chairperson, and then Mr. Legrand will have an opportunity after to, to answer all of your questions.
Okay, we just, you know, we're just, like I said, we're, we're just having a little bit of a problem, you know, with everything, what hit across the street. Like I said, this is our home, our neighborhood. And as far as other businesses around the area, it's not right in front of people's homes. The water department is not right in front of people's homes. The old cable company was not right in front of people's homes. This is all in front of our homes. That's why I'm being overprotective here, I'm sure you can understand. That's just a few of the things that I had. Just make sure there's a fence that's going to go up there on the west side, and that there is only going to have six cars. We just want to make sure there's enough parking for the customers when they come in, so then everybody's parking on the street again, because that was a mess for a while. Like I said, I'm all about small businesses, so that's pretty much all I had to say.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Doughty. The, the, the property is located in the M1 district, which allows for a multitude of commercial uses. Mr. Legrand, could you answer, reply to the, to the question about whether the cars will be off-site, not visible to the residents?
Well, do I have to cover the building also? Put a fence in front of the building?
Well...
How far down the street do I have to go with the fence?
I guess where the cars are parked is what, is what the question was, if I'm not mistaken. I guess that's the area that's being suggested to be covered with the fence.
Well, that, yeah, but we can't cover the whole parking lot, because the driveway is right in front of the parking. You can see on the map there. I can, I can extend the one that All About Auto has, I could bring it up to the driveway, and that'll extend that another 30 feet.
But then, Mr. Legrand, so the cars will be parked behind the fence, they won't be parked on the driveway, right?
Well, part of them will be behind the fence, and part of them will be in the back of the driveway.
Did, did planning have a recommendation with respect to the other side of the driveway, or the, or the extension of the fence? I think that was one of the conditions, right? And, and I, I didn't quite get before what, what planning was recommending in terms of the placement of the fence.
Thank you, George. Just to, just to clarify, the staff recommendation. So, so as you can see on the, the site plan provided, there are about four spaces that would, that would be potentially behind the fence, if that were added as a condition. Those are to the north there, and then there are some perpendicular east-west facing spaces, which are accessed from the driveway. And so, you know, those would not be able to be screened by a fence without having the fence go across the driveway. Staff, the staff recommendation was not particularly related to the, the property south of the driveway. You know, this, this is an additional condition that the board could vote to add if, if they found that it would be necessary to meet the standards for, for the special use permit. So let me know if there's any other questions or any other clarifications, but we were just, we were just, the initial recommendation was just extending it from the north to the edge of the driveway, and there was no, no recommendation for fencing along the south side of the driveway.
Mr. Legrand, you say that you will have no more than six cars, and, and four can be parked behind the fence, so there will be no more than two cars on the driveway, is that correct?
Well, two or three. But they wouldn't be there all the time, they would just be coming in and going out.
How many cars can be parked behind the fence if it's extended?
One, two, three, four, about four maybe, yeah, about four.
And there would be no reason to have more than two cars on the driveway, right?
Probably not, but there's room for more.
If, if I understand correctly, Ms. Doughty, that's what you would object to, having more cars, is that correct or not?
Well, I, I think you guys, I think you guys are missing the point here. I know there's a driveway there, but you can go over, you don't have to, to fence over the driveway. You can fence a little bit to the west of the driveway, and then on the east side of the driveway, you can go down further. There's no reason why they can't do that. I'm not saying cross the driveway. You can go from on the east side of the driveway down. He's got trees there now, but I, I heard that those are going to come down. I don't know if that's just a rumor or what, maybe it is, but you could still, we still see all that in our neighborhood, all those cars back in there. And we would really rather not have to see the parked cars there. And I thought there was an ordinance that said we didn't have to, that was supposed to be screened in, in any lot like that.
Chairperson Harris asked if we can speak to the ordinance. There is, there is a, I'm sorry, I need some feedback. We do have a transitional landscaping ordinance, which is required for when you have a new zoning district going in, or there is a change to the building footprint. There's a requirement that the additional, that the property be brought into compliance with the landscaping buffers and the screening requirements. I believe that's, that's probably what Ms. Doughty is referring to, and that's in Division 13 of the city code.
If I understand correctly, she's saying that the trees are going to come down, so there will no, be no buffer then? Is there, is that compliant?
Yeah, I think there was an observation, is that a question as to whether those, is that something that the chair wants to inquire of Mr. Legrand?
What I'm asking is if the trees come down, then there is no buffer. Is there any way to verify whether or not that's going to happen?
You could ask the applicant.
I guess, unless I'm confused looking at Google, aren't the trees behind the building and behind the parking lot? So it's not screening anything that we're even talking about for the neighbors across the street to the west?
I, I, I don't know how to respond to that. I thought, I thought the trees were supposedly to be a buffer to the neighbors, and that was the concern.
Well, the trees are all behind, by the, if I'm looking at the map right, is this, aren't we talking about the one off of, by the train tracks? Is, or am I looking at the wrong?
Caitlin, can you go up one slide to the aerial, please?
Yeah, here's the trees.
So there are...
Get inside.
So all the trees are really, were the, behind there is, that's this railroad tracks. There's, you're talking about those one clump of trees that are right there, okay. But the houses are facing, they're facing towards it, so those trees being...
So the, the staff recommend, go ahead, George.
I was going to suggest, just as a matter of procedure, that the commission asked Ms. Doughty to illustrate or to describe which tree she's interested in finding out about, and then we could ask Mr. Legrand if those are, he's intending for those to come down. Or if the commission finds that she's interested in something that's irrelevant, that doesn't need to be asked. But it sounds like we don't even know exactly which trees are relevant to the, to the person speaking against the petition.
Thank you.
Or at least asking questions.
Thank you, George. Ms. Doughty, do you see what, what the conversation is? That, that the trees are apparently behind the structure, not, would not be a buffer to your residents, is that correct?
I, I understand, yes, and they are, the trees are right between All About Auto's lot, at 604, and the building at 1321, it's a small set of trees right in there, and they don't buffer anything. You can still see that lot through those trees. He cut, they, those trees got cut, and there's no limbs on them at all. And you can see straight through there.
Okay, if I understand, this is not to your residence, though?
It might, yeah, my house is right across the street. I mean, we can see that, our neighbors can see the lot, the cars in there and stuff.
The trees, but the trees are not the issue there. I mean, the trees are not, are, are not the issue there. Those trees are not buffering your, your sightline.
Right, right, we, we, every, you can still see through there.
Chairwoman Harris, can I ask a question? Ms. Doughty?
Yes.
Ms. Doughty, I guess, I'm trying to understand as a board member, what exactly are you asking here? Are you basically saying that there's nothing that can be done to, from your standpoint, to approve having the car sales across the street? Or is there something that you're asking for a part of the special? Or is there something that you're asking for a part of the special use that we can do that would help to make this more palatable? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. No, I'm not denying it. I'm just wanting him to put the fence up there. That's what I'm asking for.
But as I see it, I think that we're limited to where the fence can go. You know, you can extend it a little bit to the driveway, and that's, I think that's what we're asking, or what staff is asking, you know, to be a requirement to have this. But I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, you were also asking to be south of the driveway extending the property, which there's no cars or anything there as well, right?
Right, just where he's got the, the fence now, then at the, the south end of the fence, if they can extend that going to the east, and then they'll bump into the, the driveway, they're gonna have to leave the driveway there, but put the, extend the fence then on the other side of the driveway and go down a little way to the property so we don't have to see the cars and stuff in there.
Mr. Legrand, are you understanding that? And what is your position on that? Is that something you can do?
Is Mr. Legrand there? Mr. Legrand, have, did you understand the question about the fencing?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that something you can do?
Well, I, I, it would be feasible to extend it to the driveway, but I can't see any sense of moving it past the driveway and run it on down the hill there. It just covers the office building.
I, I think all we're asking is that you extend it to the driveway, extend it from All About Autos and extend it to the driveway.
That will be fine.
Okay, thank you. I don't think that is, is, that is what Ms. Doughty is, is talking about, though. Are there any more comments about this? Can, can we go to the findings of fact and vote on them?
Are there any other people speaking on it?
No, I think there was only one.
Well, I move that we vote on the findings of fact on an individual basis with the respect that number two is the conditional with the fence extending to the driveway.
Is there a second to that?
I just want to point out that with respect to the findings, all of those findings need to be met. You could add a condition, I suppose, to the, to the approval of the special use. But, um, just so folks know, I mean, we can vote on them separately. I, I mean, you know, that's, that makes sense if people want to go that direction. But I just wanted to point out that each of them need to be met in order for the special use to be approved.
Okay, I think that's understood. Can we just go to the findings of fact and vote on them separately?
And just to clarify, who was the second? I didn't hear for that motion.
It was me.
Mr. Noonan, okay.
Yes, yes.
Well, with it being a motion and a second to vote on them individually, I guess we're gonna need a roll call on that.
Okay. Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Chairperson Harris, the first finding is that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. Would you like me to do roll call vote, or now, or is there any discussion that you would, would like from the commission before we vote?
We should go to a roll call vote.
So a yes vote would be that the standard is met. Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
Okay. The second standard is that the special use will not be interest to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood. Would you like discussion or a roll call vote, Chairperson Harris?
If we're gonna do a roll call on that?
Um, I just could have pointed out.
This is the one with the condition, though, right?
Well, I think you have to vote as to the finding, with perhaps someone could, people could explain that they're making the finding with the idea that the condition would be added or something like that.
Okay, okay.
Or perhaps, there's two ways to go about it. One would be for, say, people with Mr. Valentini's point of view that the condition would be, that, that, that this would be met provided a condition is added. And another is to perhaps vote to, to add that condition to this finding of fact, you know, to kind of like amend it in. And that would take a vote to amend it in. So you could do it either before, you could add the condition either prior to voting on this, or you could vote on the findings of fact first and then add the, you know, and then add the condition.
I believe, I believe we, we had a motion and a second to approve this with the condition. So can we do that?
I don't. It's not how I heard the motion. Anyone?
Mr. Valentini, could you state your motion?
Yes, the motion is to accept the condition, accept the findings of fact as a yes with the condition of extending the fencing from All About Autos to the edge of the parking lot.
And was there a second to that? Mr. Noonan?
Yes, seconded.
So we can vote on that?
Thank you.
And that, and that with the condition included?
Yeah.
So we're voting on the second finding that the special use will not be interest to the use and enjoyment of other property with the condition as stated by Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan? Sorry, Mr. Noonan, I can't hear you.
Mr. Noonan, are you muted?
Oh, hello, sorry, I couldn't hear you there for a second. Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
The third standard is that the establishment of the special use will not include the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for the uses permitted in the zoning district. Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Williams, I'm sorry, I. Yes, okay. Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Okay, the fourth standard is that adequate utilities, access road, drainage, and other, and/or necessary facilities have been provided or will be provided. Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
The fifth standard is that adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in public streets. Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yep.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
And the, the last standard is that the special use shall and all other, all their respects conform with the applicable regulations in the district in which it's located, except as such regulations may be modified by city council pursuant to the recommendation of the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
Now, we will just need a motion to act on the special use with the conditions as described by Mr. Valentini.
Can I have a motion to a, to?
Sorry.
This would be to recommend it to the city council?
Yes.
With the conditions suggested or approved already involving the fence.
Yes. Is there a motion to recommend this to the city council?
I'll make a motion to recommend this to the city council.
Mr. Noonan makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, can we have a vote to approve the variance?
Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
This will, this will go to city council for the second meeting in June.
Okay, that closes the case. Congratulations. The next case is our SP zero three twenty-one.
Would you like the staff report, Ms. Harris?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Staff is recommending approval of the special use. This is regarding chicken keeping in a residential district. The subject property is at eight ten Snyder Drive, seen here in the aerial and zoning map. It's a priority as you can see on these maps. The proposed use, that is an image of the coop that the applicant intends to use. It's a covered enclosure as well as a site plan for the proposed use. The coop is proposed to be kept here in the east corner of the fenced-in rear yard. That's a little over twenty-five feet away from the closest property to the east and about thirty-eight feet away from neighboring residents to the south, fifty feet away from the neighbors to the north. This part of the backyard is fenced in additionally. So there would be both a covered enclosure and screening in that respect. Chicken keeping has to meet both the criteria for special use as well as these provisions for keeping chickens. Staff found that all of the criteria for the special use are met. Because of the coop's proposed location, we don't anticipate a strong negative impact on any, any neighboring properties, whether in terms of enjoyment or in terms of development. Additionally, no changes are proposed or anticipated to utilities or to ingress or egress or to traffic congestion. And so, we find that all the standards for the special use are met. We also find that all the standards, all applicable standards for the chicken keeping use provisions are met. The applicant is limited to four chickens. They cannot keep roosters and they cannot keep poultry for slaughter. The chickens will be kept in a covered enclosure in a fenced-in portion of the rear yard. And the coop shall be located at least twenty-five feet away from all property lines. The requirement is ten, so it's in excess of about ten feet. Additionally, the applicant, in terms of food storage, the applicant intends to store the feed in a plastic food grain bin, which is difficult for mice and other pests to access. So we are recommending approval of the requested special use.
Thank you, Caitlin. Are there any questions for the staff? If not, can we have a testimony by the applicant? Will the applicant please state his name, his address, and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Sorry about that. My name is Dominic Metley, and my address is eight ten Snyder Drive in Bloomington, Illinois, six one seven oh one, and I do state the total truth.
Okay, could you describe your intentions?
So my intention is to keep four chickens in my fenced-in, which is this double fenced-in backyard, just to provide myself healthy eggs that I can eat. I will be getting the quietest chickens I can, which are, it's a golden comment. So I've done lots of research, and I also have spoken with my neighbors, and they're fine with it, as long as there's no roosters, which I promise there will not be any roosters. It's just basically because I cannot eat eggs, because most commercial eggs have soy products in it. I have health conditions that require me, that I cannot have soy. So this is a great opportunity for me to have, like, urban chickens with my garden that's back there and provide myself healthy eggs and a good environment for the chickens. They're not gonna be free ranging. They're never gonna leave the cage. There, there's never gonna be feed that is left outside. They will eat what I put down, and then I will bring it up, so then that way there's no pest or rodents walking, you know, running around. I want to be respectful to my neighbors. But that's basically why, why, you know, I'm requesting that today.
Thank you. Could you tell me where you're gonna store the food?
So the food will be in an airtight plastic container. And then every day, just because it's healthier for them, because they're not free range, I will ferment the feed in, like, a cup with water. And then you just kind of give it to them, and they'll eat it up. Sorry, I have a little bit of experience, because my mother-in-law has chickens. And then from there, I will take it away. So it will be stored in a container that's airlocked. Nothing can get through at all in my garage.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from Ms. Metley?
I just have a quick question. The, you said double fence, so it looks like there's a pool there?
There is a pool.
Okay, and so it's in, it's in that area, and the pool is contained with the fence, and it's inside there in the corner? And then you have an outside fence for your property line, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, are there, if there are no more questions, can we go to the finding of fact? There is, is there somebody who has, is there a test, oh, I'm sorry, testimony?
But, thank you. I was just gonna state that there is nobody else registered to speak on the petition, either in favor or against it. Staff did receive two emails prior to this meeting, which were, were emailed out. Let me share my screen. I can pull them up. And the, the first was from, the first was from Brian Kegel. It was in opposition to the request. It says, as someone with, within the five-hundred-foot radius, I have to oppose this application. You just don't have the property size to house chickens and not bother your neighbors with smell and sound in a way. And then the second, second email we received was from an adjacent, from a property owner on three Dunbar Drive. And I can read this into the record. We received the city's letter regarding an application for chicken keeping at eight ten Snyder Drive. Due to limited capacity at the meeting, we are. Due to limited capacity at the meeting, we are submitting our comments via email. We live nearby and have questions regarding this use. Although we oppose chicken keeping altogether in our 1B zoning, we understand that it is allowed by the city. Our preference would be not to allow it anywhere within city limits. Our questions and concerns are as follows. Does the city make an inspection of the property in sight prior to the hearing or before approval? This site does not appear to meet the guidelines set forth in the city code, which indicates a 10-foot buffer required from the rear and side lot lines. Based on the attached aerial view showing in-ground pool and fence enclosure, there isn't much room left for this required 10-foot buffer. The only available area, as we see it, would be visible from the condominium balconies at 901 Rhine Dollar. Does the city monitor chicken keeping on a regular basis to make sure that they are humanely kept and that the four chicken limit is maintained? What department has the responsibility? And do they only respond if there is a complaint? Are applicants required to provide design specifications and drawings for a chicken enclosure with the application? If so, we did not see it attached to the application nor a designated area where the intended enclosure will be placed. If chickens are no longer kept, does the city have requirements for removing the enclosure and chicken waste? After discussion with the neighbors close to us, it appears the majority oppose chickens, chicken keeping. However, we only speak for ourselves. This property has been partially painted going on four years. The project was never completed, the painting was done and is now peeling, the pool is empty, does not have a cover. Therefore, we have concerns about a new project at this address. As we understand it, this owner already has chickens in the house. We hope the city does a routine inspection prior to approving, approving this application to ensure all guidelines are met with no violations. Lastly, we recently heard someone has chickens near the north end of Rhine Dollar, around Snyder Drive. We're not aware, I wonder why we didn't receive a letter from the city that was approved. We have concerns as noted above, if anywhere within 500 feet of our property. We do have a fox and hawks in the neighborhood and hope this does not create a conflict for them to live amongst us.
First of all, this is George. So was this presented to the applicant too, do you know?
It was emailed to the applicant, but right before the meeting, George.
Okay, well, it sounds like to me, just in terms of, I think we want to deal with this fairly. A couple of things, one is just as a matter of administrative law, when things are sent in from one party and they're not available for, you know, they haven't called in or appeared, so they're not available for testimony in the sense of, you know, that someone would be if they testified and were able to be cross-examined and, you know, asked questions by the commission or by the applicant. The commission can consider what's there, but it should be given less weight than an actual, you know, present physically sworn witness. Having said that, there seem like there's several questions there for staff. And so maybe staff could answer them and then perhaps we could see if the applicant would want to address some of the points that are raised in the, in the email. Emails, I should say.
Katie, do you want to respond to some of those concerns? I mean, I, I think the ordinance clearly states that there will be no more than four and
That, that is correct, Jefferson Harris. The ordinance limits the number of chickens to four for any property that's under an acre. Also, roosters are prohibited. To answer the, the specific questions, staff does a site visit while preparing the report for the special use permit. The special use permit allows the city the opportunity or the ability to enforce these regulations, including the sanitation code. And the special use permit can be revoked if there's a violation in the future. And does the city monitor chicken keeping on a regular basis to make sure they're humanely kept? Limited is for, you know, we, the, as I mentioned, the special use permit provides the city with a mechanism for enforcing the ordinance. You know, if we hear complaints or receive, receive concerns, our inspectors can do an inspection and make sure that everything is being followed, that the city codes are, are being respected. The, the design specifications and drawings for the chickens enclosure, those were included in your, in the staff report. If the chickens are no longer kept, along with the special use permit, if the use is discontinued for a certain amount of time, then the, the use, a new special use permit is required to be able to, to, to have chickens again. So if there was a discontinued, the chicken keeping was, was stopped for a period of, I believe it's
Six months, I'm sorry.
Thank you, George. Yeah, six months, then, you know, the, the property owner would need to go through this process again to be able to have chickens again. Additionally, if, if the special use were revoked or, or taken away, then the property owner would need to, to go back through this process. We've shared with you that the comments that we've received in the advanced meeting and can answer any other questions the board might have.
Katie, one of the things I didn't hear, I, I heard at the very beginning of the session, when she did the was the buffer size. The concern was, you know, it, it's, there's not enough space and there is. I mean, from, based on your size arrangements, it meets it, right?
Are you asking me, I'm sorry, I want to make sure.
I'm asking Caitlin, you know, based on
Okay.
I wasn't sure either. Yes, it does, the minimum buffer is 10 feet and I'll pull up the site plan again, but the smallest distance for this placement is 25 feet. So it exceeds the 10, the 10-foot minimum.
Is there any more discussion about the concerns?
I, I guess, I'm sorry, Chairman, Chairwoman Harris. I, I guess this is more for staff and asking Katie. So we do a lot of stuff that is via Google up above. I know we've taken pictures in the past from across the street. But my question comes in, do we do any site inspection to make sure that there aren't other violations on the property before we have these come before us? I guess I'll say I'm sorry to Dominic, this is just kind of, this is just kind of a point of order.
I, I know that I personally go to the site, drive to the site to take a look at it if I, if I have a concern, just so I have some sense of the property and, and its mass and, and, and the measurements. But I think that's, that's up to the individual board.
But do we do that as a city on stuff like this? Problem I have is just that we have somebody that's made a lot of accusations. And if, if we haven't and we're going an extra step of adding a special use to a property, have we done everything we need to do to make sure that everything's checked out?
This is George, with respect to that, we can examine, we can't make a special use, I mean, unless we're going to change our ordinances. We can't make a special use contingent on things that are irrelevant to the use. I understand what your concern is and I understand what the point was in the email, but we can't, we can't add factors that aren't part of the law. Now, having, having said that, there was a site inspection by the inspector, you know, for her report. There may be inspections, if there's complaints, there would definitely be an inspection, you know, to follow up on the complaint. Having said that, like, let's say that to see that something isn't painted or something. We're not really able to make that part of our contingency because of its, 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 you know, kind of irrelevance to the legally specified factors.
George, and that's, that's Yeah, I was going to say, as George, that's exactly what, I agree, I agree with you that that's outside of the purview of what we're looking at here. I was just curious, as a city, are we sending out inspectors? And you answered that question by saying yes, so you've answered my question, thank you.
Oh, okay, good. I, I will just say, as a matter of our inspections, they generally tend to be along two lines. Either they're mandated in some cases, and those are usually rental property inspections of buildings of a certain age or certain things. But the vast majority of our inspections are complaint-driven, just because, you know, because we only have so many staff and we have, you know, so many buildings, so that, that's how they're done. There's usually, like, for example, once somebody has chickens, it's not like we send somebody over there every four months to make sure it's being done right.
Yeah, and I, I think that that answers, like I said, then that also answers the questions in the, the letters, that we did send inspectors out to the property to review everything, so if there would have been other major things, those probably would have been caught, they would have been outside of our realm. And so what we're dealing with are the chickens. And like I said, from Dominic's standpoint, just more of a clarification, so sorry that we went on that, but I just wanted to understand.
I think we do have real, pretty strict criteria that is our protocol and then, and then quick response to complaints, so. If there's no more discussion, can we?
So just to offer some clarification, so typically when we've got a special use case, it's the planner that will, as part of the review, will go out and do a site visit. So the property maintenance inspector, as a matter of course, isn't sent out as part of the special use review. That would be related to the complaint, so just to offer that clarification.
Yeah, I just wanted in there because of the letters, since the letter stated that there were all of these lists of other things that as a community, we've done what we needed to do and that even at that, those are actually separate from what we're talking about today. And that we're here to discuss the possibility of having chickens at this address.
Right, thank you, Mr. McFarland. More discussion, can we have a vote?
Could we, could we allow the applicant to address this if she wishes? She may not, but if she does, I think we ought to give her an opportunity since it was read into the record after she testified. And I, I know it was sent to her before the hearing, but it sounds like it was pretty close to the beginning of the hearing, so.
Ms. Matley, do you have something to respond to this, to the, to the complaint?
So my pool is covered, it only is covered through the winter months. I uncover it and fill it during the summer months. I don't have chickens yet, but they may be referring to the people that are behind me. And that's why I went this route, because I learned that I had to go through the city of Bloomington in order to get a special use permit for chickens, so I don't know if they are getting me confused with somebody else with chickens, I don't know. So I don't, you know, but, you know, otherwise, you know, I don't, you know. I mean, my neighbors, I don't know who these, where they're at, but I've spoken to the ones around me and they seem okay with it, so, and I, and, and I would, if, if the city felt comfortable and they wanted to inspect, I would, I would completely be open to that as well. And if somebody wants to come out and just double check to make sure that they're fine or they want to inspect prior, I'm completely open to that as well.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Matley.
No problem.
Chairwoman, I make a motion that we accept the findings in fact and whole.
Second.
Approved, so can we go to that?
Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Jefferson Harris?
Yes.
We just need a motion with a recommendation for city council.
And that was accepting the findings of fact as presented by staff in the memorandum, correct, Ms. Valentini?
And now I make a motion to authorize the the thing here.
Go to the council.
The thing here.
The special use for chickens?
Thank you, the special use for chickens.
All right.
Second.
Was that Mr. Noonan? For the second?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion to recommend city council approve the special use permit for chickens at 810 Snyder. Ms. Harris, would you like a roll call vote?
Please.
Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Jefferson Harris?
Yes.
Okay, this will go to city council for the second meeting in June.
Okay, congratulations, Ms. Matley.
Thank you guys so much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Okay, the next agenda item is Z 1421. Okay, do you hear me now?
Yes.
The subject property on Fell Avenue. The they are requesting to repair and extend the existing garage. And, and that would require a six-foot reduction in the required R1B side yard setback.
Staff is recommending approval of the requested variance. The petitioner is, is on the call and can speak to the details of the project, but is, is removing an existing garage and reconstructing a new garage in, in this, in its place. But it would encroach into the side yard six feet and there's a six-foot side yard setback that's required. So the variance is, is necessary to facilitate that project. Here's a photo of the subject property, it's just located at 1409 North Fell Street. You can see the attached garage adjacent to the, to the house. The property was constructed prior to adoption of the zoning ordinance. It's located within the White Place National Register Historic District. And the, the building, the house and the garage are both contributing to the National Register Historic District. Here is the zoning map and, and aerial map. It's, it's zone R1B, there is a six-foot side yard setback. And it is improved with the single-family home and adjacent to other single-family homes. The property is not zoned S4, does not have the historic designation, but it is part of the National Register District, which is the White Place District. I'm happy to clarify that if there's any questions about the difference between the two. The subject property is about 50 feet wide by 170 feet long. It, it is smaller than the, the max, the minimum lot size required in the R1B district. R1B requires a 70-foot width and the property is 50 feet. So the, the property itself does, is not compliant with that width, it's, it would be legal non-conforming. And then the existing garage is also, encroaches into that six-foot side yard setback. The, the applicant is requesting the variance to be able to reconstruct the new garage in the same place. The current garage is about six inches off the side property line and the new garage would be, would be on the side property line. Here are just some photos of the existing garage. And and you can see where the, the new one would go in the same location. The staff has, the, the zoning ordinance has five standards for a variance and all need to be met in order to support the variance. This is one of those cases where we're balancing neighborhood character and, and looking at a, a structure that was built prior to the zoning ordinance, balancing that against kind of our, our new code requirements. You know, the lot width makes it difficult to place, to, to move the garage anywhere else on, on, and as it's attached, you know, there's already a, a lack of space there for the R1B district. And since this, this was adopted prior to the order Um, and since this, this was adopted prior to the ordinance, you know, the, the, um, let me back up to the White Place neighborhood is, garages are specifically called out as a distinctive feature within that neighborhood. Um, it was built right around the turn of the century when cars were train, were coming and, and it was a transition from carriages to cars. And so in the district, there are certain accessory structures and attached and detached garages that are considered part of that narrative. And this is one of the few remaining attached single fam- single car garages, um, that are in the, in the neighborhood. Um, so looking at the lot size and then also balancing, if you were to move the garage, detach it and move it back so it were compliant with code, it would be, it would be eliminating that narrative and, and potentially you would lose one of those, um, those resources i- in the city. So that is, that is part of the reason why staff is recommending in favor. And then also because of the size of the lot, there is some physical hardship associated with the property. As I mentioned, you know, would this be the minimum action necessary to afford relief? It, it's a balancing act, once again, between, you know, moving the garage back, further on the lot and setting it three feet off of the, detaching it and setting it three feet off the property line. But then you, you've kind of lost that resource in the community and it, it could impact the neighborhood character. Especially because, you know, this is, this is a feature of the neighborhood and of the home. Um, so staff is recommending in favor of, uh, of the variance. I can answer any questions you might have. And, um, and the applicant is also on the call.
I, I just have a comment serving on the Bloomington Preservation Committee that this is, these are our gems. These are, these are things that we are very proud of and don't want to disturb the aesthetics of it and the coherence of that aesthetic. And I think we would be remiss to, to do that. And, and are there any other questions? If not, can we have a testimony?
I was just curious materials wise on the front, if it was going to continue with the, the same, same brick that the home, you know, home and garage currently have on it to ma- maintain that same aesthetic.
Ms. Edwards, could you, can, I, I believe that she will answer that question. Can we have you state your name, your address, and swear that you'll tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes. Hi. Good afternoon. Um, my name is Laura Edwards. I live at fourteen oh nine Fell. Um, and yes, I will tell the truth. Um, the question is about the brick on the front, and that's really important to me. Um, if I had more money, I would, um, I would use brick for the entire garage. Um, but we are definitely, um, using, we're saving the brick, we're cleaning the brick, and we're going to reuse the brick for the facade. My dad was an architect here in town and he, um, talked to me through this a lot. And I, I definitely want to, um, keep the character of this lovely. But as you can see, um, garage that is in disrepair.
Thank you. Are there any more comments or questions to Ms. Edwards? Is there anybody who wishes to speak for or against this application?
Chairperson Harris, there's, uh, no one else on the call and nobody at City Hall. Uh, staff did receive an email this morning from, um, Travis Kissinger, and I can read that if you'd like. The email, uh, has some, is expressing, uh, opposition to the petition. Appendix two shows the existing site plan as having six inch distance from the garage and property line. Appendix three shows the proposed attached garage, with the garage being directly on the property line, which is the biggest concern. My brother, Stephen Lawyer, and I inherited the house at fourteen eleven Fell and are currently in the process of selling it. The biggest concern is if the garage is directly on the property line, it may deter potential buyers. Also, moving it closer to the property line could make it difficult, impossible to repair, be made in the foundation if it were ever, ever needed. The distance between the south side of fourteen eleven Fell and the north side of the garage is already a narrow space. And this will only make it more narrow, narrower. Um, also there is an alley in the backyard, which is another option. The neighbor at fourteen thirteen Fell has this set up. Mr. Kissinger is not, is not on the call. I'm sorry.
Ms. Edwards, could you respond to that?
Sure. Yes. Um, uh, uh, first of all, I'm looking out my window and I see a sold sign next door. So yay, they sold the house. I'm glad. Um, for them, they've been, um, their grandmother was a wonderful neighbor for all these years that I was here and she passed away last fall. Um, so thank goodness that won't be affected in that way as long as the sold, um, selling of the house, which is now done, goes through. Um, the second thing, uh, about the, the adjusting, um, onto the property, property line versus the six inches. Honestly, oh, cattail. Um, honestly, um, I am fine doing it whichever way you all, um, feel is best. Um, uh, what, whichever conditions, if there are conditions, I'm, I'm fine with it. My contractor was the one who suggested that we try to extend it over. And, um, I'm fine keeping it on the exact same footprint if that is a problem to anyone. I mean, when I look out this window that way, that's where the garage is. And the tip, like the front of the garage is even with the back of the neighbor's house. And so when I think about foundation repair, I don't think that it really is going to be, would be in the way in the case of, of, of some issue like that. But who am I? I, that's not what I do for a living. So, um, that's all I really have to say.
Are there any more comments addressing this? Um, I'm not sure, um, if there is an objection to the, to the proposal. To leave it as it is. I mean, she states a concern that Ms. Edwards says is not actually, she doesn't believe is a concern for the foundation. So is there any other comment about that?
I don't, I just got a question from Ms. Edwards. How long have you lived there?
Uh, we moved here in two thousand and five.
If there are no more comments, can we go to, to the findings of fact?
Chairperson Harris, would you like a motion to, um, either accept this, the findings as presented in the staff report or a motion to vote individually on the findings?
And we have a motion to accept the findings of the staff report. As they-
I make the motion to accept the, the findings of the staff report and hold.
I second it.
Motion, moving seconded.
Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
Now we just need to, um, to, to motion to-
Motion to approve the, the variance. You're muted, I think, whoever made the- Is there a motion to approve the variance?
I motion to approve them.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Strazza and seconded, uh, by Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Mr. Noonan, I think you're muted.
Yes.
Ms. Far-
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
Congratulations. The application is approved. Okay, we will move, congratulations, Ms. Edwards. Application approved. And the next one is SP zero four twenty-one.
Uh, this is, staff is recommending in favor of, um, case SP zero four twenty-one. This is a, a special use permit for, and a variance for vehicle repair facility at, um, ten twenty-five Wiley Drive in Bloomington, Illinois, uh, in the special use permit in the B one general commercial district. Here is a, a photo of the property. It's currently improved with, um, it was a grocery store. Um, the, the property, Aldi has since relocated and it's currently vacant. So the property, uh, the, the project, the petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow for the conversion of the existing facility into a vehicle repair shop. The property is zone B one. It is adjacent to other B one zone properties and, and commercial uses. Um, there are, there's a theater to the north, hotel to the north, uh, retail and restaurants to the south. There are, is an apartment complex to the, uh, east and to the west is, um, some vacant land and retail as well. Here is a, a rendering of the, of the property, um, the proposed building. It's just included in the petitioner's application materials. Uh, no changes are really proposed to the building facade, um, other than adding a bay door, a couple bay doors, and then, um, changing the sign. And also included is a site plan. Uh, the property has adequate parking, uh, to comply with the minimum requirements for a vehicle repair, uh, facility. And the applicant is proposing to add a fence to provide screening, um, of the, of any vehicles that might be inoperable. Uh, this is a requirement by the code, but it, it's also, um, the applicant is showing that on their site plan, the fence would, would go around the perimeter there. Uh, the chapter forty-four, division ten dash thirty-four has some additional, uh, requirements for vehicle repair and services. Those use standards are met with the exception of one bulk requirement, which is to, uh, side yard setback. The ordinance requires fifteen feet and the, the property is currently built with a nine, nine point five, nine and a half foot side yard setback. The, uh, property complies with the side yard setbacks for the B one district, but for vehicle repair, there is that additional of five, the additional ten feet that's required. A B one side yard setback is five feet. Looking at the, um, the goals of the comprehensive plan, um, the special use permit facilitates redevelopment of a tier one infill redevelopment priority. Um, it, it facilitates uh, using a vacant building and repurposing that, um, that the building already has services. It's already, uh, connected to city utilities. Um, the, the proposed special use permit also, um, enhances Bloomington's image as a business friendly community and prioritizes infill redevelopment. The standards for the special use permit, I'm going to go through a few different standards in our code. So bear with me. Um, we have, we have standards specific to the special use permit, the six standards that are in seventeen dash seven. Staff found that these are met, um, with the exception of, of the final standard, which would be met upon approval of the variance. Um, similar to how we handled the conditions in the previous case. Uh, George, I think if, if the zoning board wanted, they could probably vote to approve both the special use and the variance at the same time. If, if the conclusion was that all the standards were met. Go ahead, George.
Yeah, I, I think you could probably do it with two, with, with a, a motion on the findings of fact and then a motion, I mean, for both of them and then a motion, a- as you guys phrased in the, in the memorandum, and then a motion to accept them both, if, if in fact the first one passes.
Thank you. Um, additionally, we have, uh, use provisions specific to vehicle repair. These are in ten dash thirty-four. Um, a setback from a residential boundary line, uh, the, uh, site standards for screening, um, the minimum lot requirements. As I previously mentioned, the only one that is not currently met is the side yard setback. And that is the, the one that the ver- that the property owner is requesting relief from. And looking at a variance, um, you know, there are, in seventeen dash eight of the, of city code, we have standards for, uh, variance. Um, the property has physical hardship. That would be the minimum action necessary. Uh, staff, staff finds that these are met, uh, be- because the property is existing, the building is existing. It would be very difficult to move the building to comply with the side yard setback, um, to the north. And just north of this property is a parking lot. Um, so the impacts are very minimal, um, with the nine and a half foot setback as, as currently developed. Staff is recommending in favor and would recommend a motion, um, to approve the special use permit and the variance as requested.
Um, are, if there, are there any questions or comments? I have one comment is that this, this repair shop is not going to ent- entail noise, noisy repair. That's going elsewhere. So I think that is, um, a significant factor in the spacing. Are there any other comments or questions about this? If, if not, can we have the testimony by the applicant?
Hello?
Hello. Will you state your name, your address? And swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nice to see you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Tristan Bullington. I'm the attorney for Old Acre McDonald. My business address is two oh two North Center Street, Suite Two, Bloomington, Illinois, six one seven zero one. I'm an officer of the court and I understand my obligation to any tribunal to be truthful in any statements I make. Uh, potentially testifying will be, uh, David Bailey, who works for, uh, Old Acre McDonald. Um, Mr. Bailey, why don't you unmute yourself and, uh, give your address and indicate that you will tell, tell the truth in your testimony?
Hi, David Bailey is my name. Our business address is thirty-eight forty-one Green Hills Village Drive, Suite four hundred, Nashville, Tennessee. And I swear I will tell the truth.
Additionally, we have Tim Dearman, who's the vice president of Old Maker, Old Acre McDonald. Um, he is just observing. Do not anticipate any testimony from Mr. Dearman. If that changes, I will have him sworn at the time. Being cognizant of the late hour, the staff report, uh, I will be incredibly brief in my presentation. I will indicate that we're available to answer any questions that, uh, the board may have. I- in summary, our position on that is sometimes I, I think you, you see these things where it's someone trying to come in and fit a, uh, a square peg into a round hole. And it, it sort of works, but it's not that great. The business that we're proposing to be developed here, we don't view this as something that's a, it's kind of a negative, but it, it fits, so we should allow it. We view this as becoming an asset to this area in Bloomington. This is going to be an improvement to the businesses over there with the type and caliber of caliber collision. But this isn't a junkyard where someone's going to have a bunch of used car parts thrown out back that they slap onto a, a broken car. This is a high end business that does high end auto body work all inside. Totaled cars aren't going to be present anywhere. It's going to, uh, not be a detriment. It's going to not be a detriment to the community. I really truly believe that this is going to be an improvement to our community existing there. And the only thing we're really asking for is six and a half feet of, of space so that we don't have to demolish an entire building and move it. And if that's not granted, it's very likely that that building's going to remain vacant and sit there and be detrimental to the community. So there's, there's a lot of things that allowing this provides to the community. I wanted to have, very briefly, have Mr. Bailey just talk about their experiences developing these caliber collisions throughout other communities in areas where you wouldn't expect this type of business to work. So, Mr. Bailey, if you'd talk about that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Tristan. And thank you, staff, for your recommendation on this one. And thank you, board, for the opportunity to speak. So a little bit about us, really quickly. I'm watching the clock here. We're a national developer that specializes in national tenant name brands. Everybody you've heard of, Chipotle, Panera Bread, Care Now Medical, Caliber Collision. We're hoping to bring one of these here, obviously. And to describe caliber, I think the best way to do it, similar to what Tristan described, what they're not. Right? They're not a pull apart, they're not a junkyard, they're not my Uncle Joe's old chop shop. They're not a tire shop with the doors open and the air wrenches running all day long. And they're not an oil change place with an abundance of hazardous chemicals going in and out of cars and whatnot all day long. They're, like you said, a high-quality collision repair shop, national brand with over 1,100 stores nationwide. We've put these in several locations in Indiana. We've put them in power centers next to Dick's Sporting Goods. We've put them next to apartment complexes. We've put them next to neighborhoods with a highly involved HOA. And the end result is, when people look at it and understand this business and how they operate, they say, yes, that is a good neighbor. That is someone who operates quietly, who doesn't generate a ton of traffic, who will bring tax revenue in, and who fits that while I don't want it, until I need it. You know, it, it's one of those things, again, that instead of having to go out of town to get this done at a high-quality level, it's right here, it's handy for, for the folks in the area. They're a sophisticated company, they're a great neighbor, they're a great community advocate. Like I said, 1,100 stores, so the EPA is, is watching them environmentally. They are top-notch. They have a third party that keeps them legal and keeps them beyond just barely legal. It keeps them the next level, the next level legal. Like I said, the third party handles it. Again, a little bit of how they operate, they don't do totaled cars. If a totaled car is brought on, it's deemed totaled and it's shipped out immediately. For any cars that are stored on-site, which 80% of those are driven on, as opposed to tow trucks, so, you know. These, these aren't, these aren't just ramshackle falling apart cars. But for any that do stay on-site, for their average of five to seven days, they're behind the fenced area all the time. We've, we've given an example of what the fence can be. We think it's a, it's a great-looking fence. Everybody, everybody that has seen its application in the past has enjoyed it. We've had zero complaints out of it, so. They, one other thing about them, in terms of being a community advocate, they operate a little differently than your typical shop. Right? They're, they, they're merit-based pay. So the harder you work, the faster you work, the better you work, the more you get paid. And so this not only brings, you know, white-collar jobs in terms of admin in front office, it brings the blue-collar jobs, it brings high-paid, blue-collar jobs. I've talked to several, I didn't believe this at first, I had to hear it for myself. Talked to several store operators, every single one of them have technicians making six figures. Every single one of them have technicians, auto body technicians, making six figures because it's the merit-based pay. And, you know, that provides opportunity, of course, that otherwise wouldn't be there. Like I said, we've, we work for national brand tenants, the likes of Panera Bread, Chipotle, Aldi, in fact. And we feel, based on our experience, developing these and developing others, that this is a great spot, and this will be a, a great asset to the community, to the area.
Thank you, David. Did anyone have questions for any of us?
David, how many would be employed? How many would be hired?
They typically start with somewhere in the neighborhood of 12, and then can grow it from there.
Thank you. Are there any other requirements or questions for Mr. Bailey? Mr. Bullington?
No, and I echo Mr. Bailey, and I'm embarrassed that he thanked Ms. Simpson before I had an opportunity to thank her for her hard work on preparing the staff report and the rest of the Bloomington staff for, for doing this. And thank you all for the nearly two hours you've spent today dealing with this.
Is there any, is there any testimony for or against this application?
No one else outside of the petitioner is registered to speak on this application, so. And we did not receive any comments prior to the meeting.
Okay, can we go to the findings of fact, then? Is there a mo, is there a motion?
I motion.
End of second.
Okay.
Is this a motion to, to state, to accept the findings of fact as presented by staff with respect to both the-
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes. Motion passes?
Yes, thank you. We just need a motion to recommend approval to City Council for the special use permit and the requested variance.
Make a motion to accept the special use, and the variance as presented.
Seconding it.
Mr. Valentini, is, is it to recommend to council approval inside?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes.
Yeah, the special use permit and the requested variance will go to City Council for the second meeting in June.
Thank you.
Thank you all. It was very weird not to vote.
Okay, is there any old business? If we have some new business?
We do, we, no, no old business, Chairperson Harris, but we do have to elect a new chair. I thank you very much for your service. You've been with us for two years and through COVID, and it's not been easy. But there are term limits in our code, so.
It's a pleasure, thank you. A little rattled, but it was good, thank you.
So we can take it, if there are any nominations for, for chair, we can-
I'd like to nominate Mr. Valentini.
Okay. Is there any, Mr. Valentini, would you accept that nomination? Are there any other nominations that we'd like to make? Okay. Then, George, you, we need a roll call vote for Mr. Valentini as chair.
Yes.
Mr. Valentini?
Sure.
Mr. McFarland?
Yes.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris?
Yes. Welcome, Mr. Valentini.
Thank you. Please don't yell at me.
You yelled at me.
I, I've got a question, or is the protocol-
Okay, I guess that concludes our meeting for today.
I have a quick question. Does the, is the COVID protocol of us not being-
I'm sorry?
Changing?
Is it, are you asking if the COVID protocol is changing with respect to meetings?
Somebody's muted?
Yes, George.
I think it will be changing. I don't know that it's officially changed. We're kind of in flux, along with a lot of the things that are, that are happening. As you know, the, some of these things came on rather quickly, and now they're coming off somewhat quickly. And I do expect that there'll be changes. There was recent executive orders, changes from the governor. There are still provisions for remote access. And there's also is a pending, some pending legislation. So I think, you know, I guess my, my answer is, probably will be changes, and stay tuned. But I, I don't know with enough specificity to, to tell the, the board tonight exactly what those are. And when, when they do change, though, we'll, we'll let people know, of course.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valentini.
Good night, Harris.
Uh, you're, you're on mute. We're having some technical difficulties, but Chairperson Harris is asking for a motion to end the meeting. Mr. Strazza, Mr. Valentini? George, can we do that by, by voice vote?
When, uh, the best practice is roll call, and you can do it as you like.
Mr. Valentini?
Yes.
Mr. McFarland?
Definitely.
Mr. Strazza?
Yes.
Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Chairperson Harris? Yes, all right, thank you.
I don't think we'll miss these Zoom calls too much.
All right, thank you.